Okay, good evening, Hatfield. Welcome to the December 3, 2024, meeting of the Select Board. As usual, I'm going to call the meeting to order and open the meeting by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. So our first item tonight is announcements. I have a few things. First is this Saturday, from 5:30 to 7:30, will be the holiday tree lighting. That's taking place here at the, do we still call that Smith Academy Park? Yeah, Smith Academy Park. And I will say, I came in and the display, the church, the little, oh, the church is out there? Church is out, and it looks really nice under the new pavilion. So this is, I think this is being held by the Council on Aging, right?
Yes.
The holiday tree lighting. And it will have some music and a visit from Santa and some hot chocolate and cider, and it's free. So it sounds like that'll be a really nice evening here in town. And then, of course, Luminarium is coming up on December 21. That's a Saturday night. The evening starts with a concert down at the Congregational Church at 4:30. There's also a float competition this year, and Andrew, you mentioned that starts at 4:30. Start gathering. And then 5:30 is when people will be lighting their candles. I would assume we're going to put something out on social media about that happening, because I know there was some talk about when we were having the drought conditions. I mean, we've certainly gotten plenty of rain, and it would not quite be Luminarium without lights, but...
The plan was to update folks after we were a little closer.
Right.
Once we got the rain and everything else. So that Committee meets on Monday. I assume the fire chief will be there as well, and they'll come up with a game plan.
Excellent.
So we'll keep that out to everybody.
So people should probably keep an eye on social media and also our website, just for any particular directives about that. We do want to celebrate as best we can, but we want to be safe and mindful of how dry it's been. And then the, so if candles are going to be lit, they will be lit at 5:30, and then the festivities take place at Town Hall at 6:00. Mr. Genyon will be in charge of that. And then at 6:30, the fire station will be open for some refreshments, and usually Santa's over there, and there's coffee and cocoa and cider. So thanks to the fire department for doing that. Do you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, nothing else? I guess this is our last planned meeting for the year, so I guess I would want to say a couple of things. First, obviously, we hope everyone has happy and safe holidays. Happy New Year. A big thanks to our town employees for all their work through the year. You know, every year is a big year, and everybody stepped up as usual, and we're very grateful to our employees and how hard they work. So happy holidays, everybody. The other thing I want to mention is that truly the budget, the process for building our next budget, which is the budget that starts July 1, 2025, has already started because our department heads are all busy putting together their budgets. And then we start with our financial team, which includes the Select Board, the Finance Committee, Town Treasurer, Town Accountant. We start in January in earnest, really, building that budget. And I guess what I would encourage people to do is watch the meetings and watch that process. Watch, there's a lot of information about maybe why a department is asking for an increase or needing an increase. It's months of work that we put in, and I think it's really helpful if people, you know, watch the process as it goes along. I know it's not the most exciting thing. I am well aware, right, that we're not Yellowstone or Landman or anything exciting, but it's important to educate yourself about that. So that will start in January, and I hope people will, you know, watch and participate, if they so choose. Anything else? You're good. Okay. All right, so next on the agenda is public forum. Is anybody here for public forum? I don't think so. Okay. So we will move right into our consent agenda, which is the approval of the November 19, 2024 minutes.
I make a motion, we approve of November 19, 2024 minutes.
I'll second that with one small correction. On the first page, under announcements, line 7, it says, "Tree lighting is December 5." I believe that should say December 7.
Wow, that's a good catch, Ed. Okay, so with that correction, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Karen, thank you very much. Okay, our regular posted business, our first topic is supposed to happen at 5:45, and that is a water and sewer rate hearing, so we do need to make sure that we actually wait until 5:45 to do that. Our next topic is a discussion with our accountant, but I'm assuming that's going to take more than seven minutes. She's smiling. You want us to take something else? Elizabeth, ahead of you.
You know what? I won't take as long as you think.
Okay.
I grew up in Connecticut, so I talk fast.
Well, we'll try to listen fast, so go ahead.
Are we ready for me?
Yes, yes. So we're joined online by our accountant, Elizabeth Bracia.
Okay, and do I have permission to share?
Oh, we need to, he needs to make an...
The problem is, let me start the slideshow.
I think he's making an adjustment. Our, but I can still share, though. John, do you need, do you prefer we not do this now? There are cords flying around here, Elizabeth. Hang on one second.
Do you want me to take this down for a second?
I don't know.
But I don't know how to not share. I'm going to start sharing.
I just shared, Elizabeth. You should be set.
I don't know if everybody can see this now that I did it in front of my screen.
No, we're not seeing anything.
I'm wondering, I don't think, I mean, we have six minutes until the hearing starts, so do you want, do you want to?
Figure out, get the tech right, and then...
Yeah, well, he'll work on the tech, and then once the water and sewer hearing is over, we'll be ready for you. So sorry, I jumped the gun a little bit. Oh, he's ready. Okay, so let's dive right in.
So...
Oh, wait a minute. I don't want to do that.
Can everybody see my screen?
I can. Okay, that's better. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Excellent. So I thought, I think last year, folks had asked me for some financials. I really wasn't prepared. I had only started, just started work with you. So once we closed the books, I thought it would be a good idea to just give you an overview on, you know, what went into that free cash calculation and your fund balances and stuff. It's always good information to have in case you go to town meeting and somebody says, "Why do we have a million in free cash?" And you can answer those questions, because you'll have this document. So I'm going to jump into the things that, slide move, okay. So the first thing we look at is, what did we turn back from our budget? So your town budget, we turned back for $476,000. And some of those big numbers that turned back, departments that turned back a little bit more money was the treasurer's budget at $35,000, police budget with a little over $28,000, school budget with a little over $94,000. Your town hall fuel line came in lower, so that was $37,000. Debt service, I believe this was budgeted in anticipation of a bond payment, but it was, continued to be a short-term borrowing, so it wasn't needed, so that got turned back. And then a $63,000 excess in health insurance also turned back. That's not the entire 476, obviously, those are just the bigger numbers. And then the aggregate came from smaller amounts from other departmental budgets. And at any point, feel free to ask me a question unless you want to wait to the end and then ask me. I'll just go right through it.
Yeah, I'll have to stop you at 5:45, and we'll take a little, we'll do our water and sewer hearing, and then we'll get back to you.
Okay, that's fair enough.
But just keep, keep going.
And the next thing, the next thing is your local revenues. So, you know, what you turned back from your budget and what you, what you collect in excess of what you estimated for your local receipts is a big part of the free cash calculation. And for fiscal year '24, you estimated a million point one, or 1.1 million, I should say, and collected 1.5 million. So in excess of $434,000, which is a nice amount of money to go towards your free cash calculation.
Can you briefly explain to people what...
Pilot areas are 43,000, motor vehicle, in excess of what we anticipated. Meals was almost 6,000. The pilot came in at 8,000. Other departmental revenue is about 24,000. Investment income is a big part of this, which is a 229, 298. The interest rates, as we all know, stay high for the mortgage market. They also stay high in investment. So we've been capitalizing on that with some good banking. Kudos to the Treasury Department. And then your next one is your non-mis, miscellaneous non-recurring, which are monies that come in that you were not anticipating. They don't happen every year, the one-time infusions. And I'm just going to give you a breakdown of what that miscellaneous was, so you have an idea of where that came from. The biggest one was prior-year adjustments of cash and a few other things of 89,000, when we did a big reconciliation. To close the cash, reconcile the cash, we realized that we had understated the cash on the general ledger by that amount, so we made that adjustment, talked to the auditors about it, everything, some board, they're on board with us. The other thing is sale of surplus equipment at 31,000. And then there were some grants that had been long closed out, and there was some money sitting in there. We reviewed that, some of them were school grants. We talked to the town administrator and the school department and got an agreement to close some of those out in tune of 18,000. And then there was a bond premium from the short-term borrowing. We received some money there. The balance left on that was 3,000 and change. And then some miscellaneous refunds that we got from different vendors and such, that was 2,500 and change. And then some grant fees at 1,900 and just some miscellaneous fees that are charged by departments that don't fall in any other bucket. And then this is, basically, right here is the undesignated fund balance and a little analysis of how we get to that number, that at the end of the year, of what's left over at the end of the year, of what we had to expend, money we got, and this was unexpended, unused amount of money that the town has. So I'm going to take you back to last year. You had the undesignated fund balance at the end of the year was 653,000, and that's what started your calculation for free cash last year. So what you do is you take last year's, you add back anything that you had reserved from the prior year into the next year. So that's your encumbrances and continued appropriations. You add that back, and you come to your updated fund balance. It's the million seventeen. And then you start over, and you say, okay, for now, for '24, we're going to deduct our encumbrances, which are, you know, departmental expenditures. They didn't get the invoices by the end of June, so we bring the money into July to pay it. The biggest part of that is the school summer teacher pay. And then your reserve expenditures, earning your free cash votes that are from prior-year free cash, you use in the next year's budget for expenditures. And then you have your continued appropriations, which are your special articles that you vote annually, and if they were not finished, we bring them forward to be continued and closed out in the following year. And then there was this $2,000 for debt service.
Elizabeth, Elizabeth, I have to just ask you to pause right there, because we do have to get to our hearing at 5:45. It's a particular time, so sorry to do that.
No worries.
Okay, so because it is 5:45, we will start our water and sewer rate hearing with the intent of voting on the new water and sewer rates. This was, there was a presentation at the last meeting about these rates and, you know, why they're going up, sort of how it's working with the first and second half this year, which is not great, not happy about that, but it's still the same rate increase over the course of the total year. Am I making sense? Okay. So any, any discussion on these proposed rates? Phil, is there anything you wanted to pipe in? I know you talked, spoke to it last time. Are any of you here to mention anything or talk about the rates at all? I know you're here for other things, but no. I'll take a motion then on, unless you, either of you have anything you want to pipe in on?
No, I just, again, I mean, at the last meeting, I think it was explained to everybody the reason behind this. I mean, you have, you know, electricity goes up, chemical use goes up, there's a lot of different things that happen. And as everybody knows, everything gets a little bit more expensive, and we're actually behind the eight ball on this because we should have raised the rates a few months ago, and we didn't. So I mean, I think we have, we have to pay our bills, so I don't see any option unless you take money from free cash, and you don't want to do that because you don't want to use free cash for capital expenses and stuff. So that's the wrong thing to do. So, I mean, there is some money in water and sewer, but that money's going to be targeted for the $1.4 million price tag that we add to the loan, because we have to get the extras for the plant. So we are using some of the money from water and sewer for that expense. So I mean, I just, there's no way around it. I think we don't have any option personally.
And I think it's also important to note that any, any other shift would mean that general, this is, this is for the users to pay, for the people who are actually using the water and sewer systems. So any additional, if any shift to do anything other than that would mean that people, the burden is shifting to taxpayers who don't even get to use the systems. And I did have that discussion with a resident this week, but, so.
Okay. Yeah. Got to do it.
So you're just, the board is... Were you here for the hearing?
I'm here for the hearings on the street hearing.
Oh, okay, fine. We're talking about water and sewer rates. I just wanted to make sure you didn't want to say something, that's all.
And so the board is just voting the rate increase for the second half of FY25 tonight.
Right.
For both.
For both water and sewer, yes.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the rate increase for the sewer. You want the numbers on this when I do a motion, or?
Yes, please. So that'd be the 1387.
Okay, the sewer rate will now, will become 1387.
Per hundred cubic feet.
Per hundred cubic feet. And for the water, we will become $7, 7 cents per cubic feet.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Great. Elizabeth, back to you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, so explain the deduction of the reserves, and that essentially brings your fund balance down to the 201,000 at that point. And then to get to the rest of your fund balance, you add all of the revenues you received, collected over the year. That's everything from taxes to departmental and so on. And then finance, other financing sources are your transfers from other funds like stabilization or some of your other funds that you move over to cover the town department omnibudget. And then you subtract all your expenditures for the year, including any expenses transferred out to other funds. And you come up with your new fund balance of 1.3 million. And then I'll give you some highlights of the reserve for encumbrances was the 459,000. The reserve for expenditures, like I said, was your free cash, which was 137,281. Reserve for continued appropriation, and then the reserve for debt service, so your total reserves were 817,430. And then your revenue closed to the fund balance was 13,249,572. Expenditures closed to fund balance is a decrease, your fund balance is 12,000, 12 million 104, wouldn't it be nice if it was 12,000? 12 million 104,303, with an overall increase to the fund balance of the 1,145,216. And then your free cash that was certified on November 7 was 1,108,434. How we got to that?
It's a good number.
This is how you calculate your free cash. You start with that undesignated fund balance that we talked about, the 1,003. You deduct outstanding property taxes, your personal property and your real estate taxes, and in any deficit in any other fund, whether it be grants, variances in cash or withholdings, your state payments for FID, if you've got a deficit there, anything that's got a deficit and it hits your free cash calculation. So there was 104,000 in deficits for fiscal year '24, and I'll go over those in the next slides. And then you add back your deferred revenue to come up with your free cash calculation of 1,001. So the uncollected personal property is really low, $692. It's one of the lowest ones I've seen in a long time, which is very nice. I mean, your collection, collection department's doing a good job. Uncollected real estate is also very low, at 140,163. And then the deferred revenue was 7,608. And then, like I said, the deductions, the deficits too, it could be grants, donations, withholdings, Chapter 90, trust funds, anything that has a deficit, variances in cash reconciliation, your receivable reconciliation, or payroll withholdings. So our deficits this past year were for sped. A lot of these were submitted, we just didn't get them before June, September 30 is the deadline the DOR gives us. If it comes in after that, you get hit for a deficit. So we're going to work a little, you know, a lot more closely with the school coming this coming year to make sure that we clean up these deficits before we get to that September date. And then there was a little bit of variances and withholdings. We're going to work on those. We're working with the treasurer to kind of figure out what those were and get them straightened out. And a really small variance in cash, but the DOR wants to hit you for it anyway. And we identified what it was, we couldn't get it fixed before the year end, so we're going to work on it this year.
And it's only $245, just for, you know, yep.
What's that?
No, that's fine, just keep, that's fine, just keep going.
Okay, that's basically your finances for fiscal year '24. And then for fun, because that's what people who work with numbers like to do, is I did some historical graphs of your tax rates and things like that, free cash. I thought it would be nice to see some pictures of how things are going. It took a 10-year look back, your tax levy amount, you know, like you can expect with any town, your levy's going to go up annually as costs go up. It's not anything we can really control. Your property valuations, as we all know, we had that big boom post-COVID. It's starting to slow down, so I suspect '26, '27, maybe this will tear off and not keep going straight up for property valuations. And then your tax rate pretty much is up and down along with those, what you have to raise and what your valuations are. And then just a quick look at your state aid and where that's gone. I guess in '20, there was a lot more money coming in, and then we had a little bit of a drop, and we're starting to get back up there again for state aid. Your assessments still continue, as with anything with costs, that they seem to have a steady curve up. And then I did a quick comparison of your school state aid versus assessments, which is actually nice, that your school aid is a lot higher than your school assessments. So that's a positive view of that. And then this last one just shows you what your fund balance compared to free cash, and I think this is an important picture. It shows how well the finances have gotten and how you're managing that, your departments are managing the grants. The blue line is your undesignated fund balance, and the orange line is your free cash. 115, you can see there was a big discrepancy there, which means you had a lot of deficits that hit against that. Collections probably weren't as good, grants not collected on time. So over the past 10 years, the town's really tightened up the belts, and you've got a much closer line of where your fund balance is compared to where your free cash is.
Wow, that's great information. Yeah.
Take any questions?
That's terrific.
Do you want me to leave it up, or do you want me to stop sharing at this point?
You could stop sharing, I think.
Okay.
I actually have a question that's actually for Tammy, the uncollected real estate. Is any of that old enough to be tax title? Like, how much do we have in tax? Well, I mean, just, yeah, currently, are we, are how many?
So she had you at 140, currently I'm at 96.
Oh.
And about, probably two-thirds of that, we'll jump over to tax title, because most of them are tax title accounts.
Okay.
There's about 10 accounts that we're working on right now, coming payment in about 4,300, and 14 other accounts, about 16,000 tax title accounts. We're looking to, she's looking to sell the land and clear her tax title, so that's looking at about a $60,000 gain to us.
That's a large portion of that 96 that's left.
Yes.
Okay. So if all those things happen, we'll be in, actually, extremely good shape.
Outstanding '24, yes.
Yeah, okay. What about previous years?
Previous tax title, we set at about 266, 55,000 about of that is going to be.
Taken care of.
That left piece. And some of the other ones, we're looking, I'm working with a couple, like four different people right now to try to get them out of tax title. So we're working with a couple right now, and then going into the new year, we'll jump into a couple more.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question. Ed, Greg, any questions?
No, I really appreciate this report that you've presented to us. It's nice to see everything on graphs and paper. I mean, I think this is the first time we've sort of had this type of presentation, and I...
Been quite a while.
I think it's great.
Is this something we can get up on the website and so people can look through it?
We can do that.
Townspeople can look through it. It is really, really good information presented in a way that's, you know, really easy to understand, you know, even for, I think even people who, you know, aren't doing this all the time, because municipal finance is a little different. I think it would be really important for townspeople to see that, so. Elizabeth, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for having me. I hope everybody had a great holiday, and I hope you have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, you too. You too. Thanks, Elizabeth, thank you. Okay, so moving right along, topic three is a discussion and possible vote on a proposal to create a task force for use of opioid settlement funds, and this would be under the direction of the Board of Health. So Dr. Menz is here. Are you the chair currently?
No.
No, okay.
That's Bob Ossley.
I thought it was Bob. Well, thanks for being here.
That's okay. All right. So, yeah, so to start off, basically what, you know, has been discussed over the last several months with some, a couple of folks from the community who are, had some interest in this, was that basically Massachusetts reached, you know, settlement agreements with several pharmaceutical companies regarding their role in the opioid epidemic. And so Massachusetts allocated about 40%, I think, of these settlement funds to the communities throughout the Commonwealth from, I think it was 2022 through 2038. And there, you know, the funds have been kind of, you know, there hasn't been a specific allocation on, you know, how we're going to use them. And part of the, part of the reason, one of the reasons why we were talking about a task force is because we wanted to have more of a specific plan on what we can use these funds for. And they have it kind of detailed out here in the, and there's specific criteria, so like, I'm not going to go over all of them, but there's like six or seven, I think, great specific areas to use these funds. And so the, the way that, how the Board of Health got involved was that we met with a couple of these folks in the community about how do we get more community engagement and involvement on how to use these funds? So like, what do we want to do as Hatfield to, where do we want these funds to go? And so we talked about, could there be a... And so we talked about, could there be like a task force of, you know, community members and, you know, that can kind of spearhead this, but also kind of represent the rest of the community? And I've met with, you know, Liz Kugler and Lynn Harlow have been actively involved in this. I met with them for several hours discussing this. And we were talking about, there's, there's actually other towns and municipalities that actually use a survey. And there's been a few examples that we've looked at. And one is actually already in place in Hampshire, I think Hampshire County, that we could either just use, because that's, that's an option for us, or look at all these surveys and kind of pick and choose what questions we want to ask about, you know, where do we think is, you know, what area is most important to you with regards to where these funds are spent and, you know, demographic information and things like that? And so, so, you know, really with regards to this task force, it wouldn't be, you know, it'd be only maybe a handful, no more than maybe five or 10 people to kind of spearhead this and make sure it just kind of runs smoothly, but essentially some sort of survey that kind of able to kind of tabulate results and where we can direct these funds, so.
So survey residents.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, it's great to have this resource coming to the town and certainly trying to figure out where residents think we should put our efforts. You know, some of the things listed here are supporting treatment and recovery efforts, addressing the needs of criminally, criminal justice-involved persons, and expanding opioid use prevention programs.
Yeah.
All worthwhile.
Yeah.
So I'd be really curious to see how townspeople respond to that. And then these, these funds, I just have a question about them. So would it be, I don't know how it would work, so for instance, like supporting treatment and recovery efforts, would that be programs that do that or actually help available to residents who may need assistance with, you know, extra funds or some, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, it's a great question. It's kind of nebulous, but more the former, that there would be some sort of program in place that we would kind of work with, and, and these funds would be allocated to that, you know, program to help these families. So like you said, opioid use disorder treatment, support for people in treatment and recovery, connections to care, harm reduction, address the needs of criminal justice-involved persons like you mentioned, support pregnant or parenting women and their families. And then I think the biggest, what's most important, prevent misuse of opioids and implement treatment prevention education. We were talking about the last Board of Health meeting, that, you know, DARE was a great program back in the day about, you know, drug abuse resistance education, so some sort of preventive program. So think about getting someone from the school and someone from the police department. I think the police chief was involved, was interested, and a couple of community members and just kind of putting our heads together.
I, I mean, I've always been pushing for some type of program in the school system, especially at the high school.
Yeah.
Something, whether they bring in a speaker or whatever for, that deals with drug prevention. But my question to you is, on these funds, like the first year, I see there is a large amount. If all that money is not spent, can it be spent the next year? Does it carry over? Or does the money targeted for that year have to all be spent?
That's a great question. My understanding is that it does carry over, but I have to.
I would agree with that. The funds do carry over.
It says there's no deadline on when to use the funds.
Have them a special opioid account.
And my, my second question is, presently, we signed in with, I think Sunderland or Deerfield, I forget which one, for a professional mental health individual, and it's, it's only a couple of days a week, and some of the crises are drug or alcohol-related situations that they respond to. Could any of that money be used to increase the time of that professional? Or, I'm just curious, that's.
So I imagine so, absolutely.
We could talk to the police chief about it, because that is a shared agreement that we have with.
That's true, the police department, Deerfield.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I think, I haven't directly spoke to the police chief, but I'm, my understanding is that he's interested in being involved in this, so.
Oh, I'm sure he is.
That's good.
Yeah. That's an excellent thought about, I mean, both the, you know, prevention programs, because that just makes sense.
Yeah.
But I was also thinking about this individual we already have, who does come to town sometimes and works in conjunction with the police department on particular, particularly sensitive mental health calls.
Yeah, no, that's great. If we could increase the other access or, you know.
So just augment something that already exists, that's a good idea, too. But I think it'd be really interesting to survey, particularly if the surveys are built, it sounds like, and we can just sort of plug and play and.
Yeah, with, with, with help of Lynn Harlow, she did a lot of the groundwork on this, but, you know, just looking at a few of the surveys, there's one that like literally is just, it's for Hampshire County, it has Hatfield as a dropdown option, and then, and basically the, the town has access to all the data, so I think it's HampshireHope.org. And I went through all the questions, and it looked to be very, you know, everything that we wanted to know, so it's just kind of making sure that, you know, a few of us look at it together and say, okay, this, this, this looks, you know, appropriate and representative of everyone's, you know, concerns and.
So I assume the survey would be something online?
Mm-hmm.
And it's just making sure that all the residents are aware of it somehow?
It's a great.
So they can participate if they so desire.
That's a great question. So I think what maybe you're suggesting is, possibly is that maybe we should have a paper option for those who may not have access or just not as computer savvy. I think that's, that's something we'll look into, I think that should be.
Well, can any of the money that's presented be used to help offset the cost of the papers are printing and the mailings, that's all?
I think most people would probably prefer to do it online, but having an option for people if they wanted to stop and pick up a paper survey.
It doesn't sound like there's a lot of strict criteria, like that, I mean, I'm not sure, you know, there's, I think there's been funds that's already been spent and it's, you know, it's not, we're not quite clear if it was in line with these or not, but it's, it doesn't sound like there's.
I mean, I suppose you're going to have a box in town hall, and if they want to pick up a paper question, a survey, and they could drop it into the box, I guess.
Yeah, I feel like we could do something like just a QR code and just, you know, most folks have a cell phone or something, and you just kind of take a picture and.
Yeah, a link on our website.
Yeah.
Putting it, I think putting it out on social media would be a really good idea, even, even on like the Hatfield Parents page, but also our town pages, and just get it out where people are.
I know their superintendent's newsletter reaches a lot of parents in the school system. That might be another way to advertise.
Would be. Even the Council on Aging newsletter, put a, you know, there's, everybody should be polled and have a chance to weigh in on it.
Yeah, any sort of public, you know, document that's going out to residents, I think, would be, would be helpful.
Well, I think once you're, once you're ready, and you, I would say just reach out to Marlene and Andrew, or just Andrew, depending on when it is.
Yeah.
And they'll help you get it out, and then.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll have more, more data.
Excellent. Well, thanks for letting us know about all of this and spearheading, you know, sort of taking the lead on making sure that these funds are used in the most beneficial way.
No problem.
Yeah.
So we believe that the Select Board still does have the authority over how these funds would be used.
Okay.
From what we can tell. So the thought was tonight, the Select Board could authorize some kind of task force, ad hoc committee, whatever the board likes, and if you're ready, you can appoint members to it, or you can do that at your next meeting. You might want to put out to the public if there's anyone interested in being on such a task force. There's some members who I think would make sense based on their, their roles in the town.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Menz has already been designated by the Board of Health as someone who can represent the Board of Health, should he be a member that you'd be interested in including.
Yeah.
As some of the board.
Okay, so we can, we should probably, I mean, I think there should, I would assume that this task force will make a recommendation, and then we would ultimately decide on how the money is, how the money is spent. So I don't necessarily think we need to have a representation on the board, because it will come to us for, for discussion and final approval.
But we could, we could start a small task force for the surveys and stuff, and then expand it once the surveys come back. That's another option, right?
That's definitely an option.
Yeah, so, I mean, right now you have a few people involved with the ser, trying to figure out what, for the surveys, I mean, we could actually, if we wanted, appoint them as the beginning of the task force.
It could grow.
And as they get to surveys, they can say, well, we'd like a couple more members, we want one from this department or that department to, I mean, that's, that's an option.
And in particular, once people see this, there may be some people that step forward.
Yeah.
That may have really great, you know, experience or expertise in this field, so.
Yeah.
So are you looking for us to appoint at least some people tonight so that you can get the process started?
Um, not necessarily, but I mean, if it's something that is.
What do you think?
I would, I would recommend appointing the members who've kind of already gotten involved. I'd also be willing to be a member if that'd be helpful.
That'd be good.
And anyone else you think would be instrumental at this time, and then I think, it's like remember Jorski's, it's a good one, we can add people if we want.
Okay, then, that's the case, I'll make a motion to appoint a task force that would be consisting of our town administrator, Andrew, Dr. Lance, who else is on?
Lynn Harlow, Liz Kugler, and there was two others that we, those are the definite ones.
What about, did the chief want to be on it?
That's, I haven't confirmed with him specifically, but I, my understanding is.
We could appoint him.
He was, he was willing to be involved.
I think he should be on there.
And then I was hoping to get maybe like the school counselor or something.
Okay.
And then we can kind of play.
Okay.
You can appoint a school representative.
Yeah, someone.
They can decide who.
Okay.
So, well, I'm including, whom I, I'm quoting the other members that were mentioned here, which is five right now.
Andrew, Dr. Menz.
There'll be six.
Harlow.
If you're including a school rep.
That would be six.
Six is good. And did the police, did you want to include the police chief?
I included him, yeah.
Six. Yeah, that sounds, that's actually perfect, yeah, that sounds great.
So my motion is to include as our chair has mentioned the names, and those are the names I'd like to appoint to the task force.
Yeah, let's hear it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for, yeah, I look forward to using those funds, it's a lot of money.
Okay, so, topic four is to approve our annual license renewals for 2025. This is liquor licenses, Class 1, 2, and 3 auto dealer licenses, entertainment licenses, and automatic amusement licenses.
And nobody on the list owes any back taxes, is that correct? And all the fees have been paid.
That is a lot of work.
It is.
I used to do it for many years, so I know how much work it is, so thank you very much for that. So did you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license as presented to us.
Do you want to do them all at once, or do the, the licenses separately?
Well, I'll start with.
You'll start with liquor, okay.
I'll start with the alcohol license, that's the proper name.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the alcohol licenses as presented to us on this sheet.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the auto amusement device licenses as presented to us on this sheet.
One second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. You guys going to vote?
I make a motion to approve Class 1, 2, and Class 3 licenses as are presented to us on this sheet.
Motion made in second, any further, I do have a little discussion on the Class 1, 2, and 3. So I see we're still renewing as GNS Industrial?
Yes.
But I mean, Harrison Diesel puts a lot of stuff up on social media that they're operating.
They are not.
They're on, I see stuff all the time.
My understanding is they do not have clear title of, of the business yet.
Hmm, okay. I see it all over the place, so. Maybe we should.
They, the two of them are working out some financial.
Okay.
Issues.
Maybe we should encourage them to get that taken care of if they're going to be operating under the other name.
I had a telephone discussion with Mr. Savard about a week and a half ago, and told him that you and Harrison need to get that worked out.
Okay, so, that's good, I'm not the only one noticing it then, yeah, okay. I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve the entertainment licenses as presented to us on this sheet.
One second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so there's a lot of, and then these, the seasonal population increase estimation and the renewal certification, we just sign those, we don't, they don't have to be specific So I, may I suggest, let's see. So you, you said you're here, oh, the community host, do you want to take out of order since they're here to talk about their, the host agreements?
Sure, we can do that.
I mean, we are not going to make you sit through all this, as exciting as it is. If you wanted to come up to the microphone, we will take you out of order. And I'm going to just sit here and sign dozens of licenses, so please bear with me, I, I will really be paying attention. So we are joined tonight, River Valley Growers, and this is about a community host agreement. Marlene, I guess.
Host community agreements. The first one is an amended host community agreement between the town and River Valley Growers. And the reason for the amended is very similar to Treeworks, you know, these host community agreements need to meet the standard requirements by the Cannabis Control Commission. So the agreement has been amended to meet those requirements, so.
To be, come into compliance with that.
That's right. So requesting the board to approve the amended host community agreement.
I have no questions about it, I mean, you don't really have.
So that should be a separate vote.
Right.
And this is what legal has presented to us, our legal, right?
The host community agreement has been reviewed by their attorney as well as the town's attorney.
All's attorneys have talked to each other, and they've all agreed on everything.
I assure you of that, yes.
And there's a bunch of agreements. They're all, are we just signing the same copy multiple times?
Uh, there's two there, so.
So there's River Valley, oh, so there's just.
There should be two for each one.
Two separate ones.
So you're signing.
River Valley.
Right.
River Valley, that's three.
Oh, three. There shouldn't be three.
There should be.
So one is a, so there's one amended host community agreement, and then there's a settlement agreement.
Okay.
Between the town and River Valley.
Host community, host.
Right now you're voting on the.
Host community.
Host community agreement.
Okay.
In the signature folder, I believe there's two.
It's just me, it looks like, that signs these.
Okay.
Yes, and did you make a motion, Ed?
I didn't yet, no.
Oh, you didn't yet, okay.
I'm trying to figure out what the motion should be.
Yeah, so we're signing for the River Valley Growers.
The motion is to, to approve the amended host community agreement between the town of Hatfield and River Valley Growers.
Right.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the amended host agreement between the town of Hatfield and the River Valley Growers Incorporated.
One second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So this is actually, this only requires my signature. And there's two copies in here, correct, Marlene?
Yes, yes.
And then the next order of business would be the settlement agreement between the town of Hatfield and River Valley Growers.
Correct. And as, as you know, with the first host community agreement, there was an agreement that the, that River Valley Growers would compensate the town based on their wholesales. You know, from, what was it, the 14th month from when their business began. And so this is a settlement agreement for.
And you guys haven't started yet, right? This is North Hatfield.
River Valley Growers has started. They're in operation.
Okay. So I'm River Valley Growers.
Yes.
I'm the attorney.
Your attorney pleasure.
Yes.
Oh, thank you for coming.
Nice to meet you, in person.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion that we accept the settlement agreement between the town of Hatfield and River Valley Growers Incorporated.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next agreement is a host community agreement between the town of Hatfield and Pharmacy. This is a new host community agreement. They are applying for a license to the CCC. And again, this, this agreement is based on the required.
This is a new operation?
Pharmacy.
Yeah, this is the one I'm thinking of, North Hatfield, right?
Yes.
This is the one for North Hatfield.
Yes.
You guys are on Main Street, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, River Valley Growers is on Main Street, Pharmacy is on North Hatfield.
Right, okay.
They're actually called Hatfield Pharmacy.
Oh, Hatfield Pharmacy.
This is the one that's actually right by my house.
Our lawyers are happy right on this one, too?
All three documents have been reviewed by both attorneys.
I'll make a motion to approve the host agreement between the town of Hatfield and Hatfield Pharmacy LLC.
One second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we have a new agreement?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, that's.
That's it, right?
That is everything, and these are all signed, as soon as I sign this.
Everything comes back to us twice, it seems. We, we do it once, and then a couple months later, it comes back, we got to do it a second time. We go find something, we put you at a third time, right?
Everything is a process. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you for taking us out of order, appreciate it.
Of course, yeah.
For counter-signing these, will, will copies be sent to the?
Yes, we'll, we'll mail two of them, two for each.
Okay.
And, and then if you can just mail one back to us.
Fantastic, thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go back to topic five, which is the DPW report. Phil, if you want to come on up. I'm just going to keep signing all these licenses, Phil, while you fill us in. So the first item is the discussion of maintenance of school grounds and town-owned property, which is something we touched on a little bit at the last meeting.
I have not had a conversation with Connor as of yet. We've been working on the capital projects for the schools. I mean, like I said before, that the DPW, anything that was related to around any of the dugouts or any of the storage units, we did not weed whack. We did not trim. That was always within the school or within the rec committee.
Well.
Who, who's going to do it?
Yeah. I mean, this seems like a five-minute conversation. Like, let's have the conversation, it's not really growing season anymore, we don't really have to worry about weed whacking or anything now. Let's have the conversation now so that we have a process in place to make sure that all of our town properties are looking okay and not overgrown and nasty. And I mean, it might be that recreation has to be part of the conversation, too, because isn't that shed actually, doesn't it? And the equipment that was in the photo sent to us, isn't that actually recreation?
Correct. Yes.
So if you could just pull everybody together and have the conversation, and just make sure that we know who's going to take care of it when the spring starts.
Because weed whacking is like once a week or once every two weeks, right, basically?
Depending on the weather and the rains it grows and.
And usually around here, whoever.
We were building the walking path, that the weeds were higher than the dugout, so obviously no one was maintaining anything out there either, so.
Most of your landscaping companies come in and they mow and they weed whack at the same time, so.
Yeah.
We, we spent many, many hours in the town cemeteries doing that. I mean, you have.
The cemeteries look terrific.
I mean, we have to weed whack around every headstone and then mow in between everything, and it takes a lot of time.
Maybe it comes down to a need of another part-time, uh, summer help or something, maybe that's what it comes down to. I mean, most of it was volunteer before, but I don't see the volunteers doing it anymore. Maybe it'll come back.
That's exactly what happened with them.
Right.
The rec volunteers aren't volunteering any longer.
Well, that's why I think rec needs to be part of the discussion, especially if they're going to be leaving equipment around, and then stuff is going to grow up around it. I mean, they have a duty and a responsibility as well. I mean, we can't expect rec people to be operating equipment and mowing and weed whacking, but at least keeping the equipment orderly so that the people who do need to clean the spaces aren't trying to weed whack around soccer goals.
And Recreation Purchased, Recreation Commission purchased a shed to store equipment, so that's any equipment.
That's where the weeds are.
And that's where the weeds are around the shed.
Plus, there's a big pile of infill mixed down there that is just growing weeds.
I know that.
And there was like goals sitting there and getting all, you know, I mean, I, I, you know, I kind of appreciate it when sometimes residents will let me know that, no, we're not, we aren't driving around town all the time and seeing every, you know, so I, I appreciate it when people point that out. My phone's going crazy.
Yeah, so that big hill also, what's up with that?
Yeah.
You know, that's a big mound of dirt.
It's a quick, it's a conversation, it shouldn't take that long. Get everybody together and just, this is the time of year to figure it out. Everybody set on that one? Notification from Mass DOT regarding the Hatfield North Hampton bicycle and pedestrian improvements on Route 5 and 10, including a bridge replacement on West Street.
So I believe that went to the select board, that notification.
Yep. Yep, a letter, you have a letter in your packet from Mass DOT, the Highway Division has, they have a project review committee that has approved a project along Route 5, which includes the bicycle and pedestrian improvements and a bridge replacement in Hatfield. And I don't know if anybody from Mass DOT Highway Division will be in communication with you regarding, as this project moves forward?
Just, no, I have not had any communication from Mass DOT about it.
Oh, well, you received this letter?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't know moving forward and during, when, when they actually begin the project, if and when they begin the project, just they'll be having communication with you.
Is it something we have to make sure we have utilities on also, like the other bridges? Or do we already have that? I know the gas line already goes there, but I don't have anything else.
That's okay.
We kind of know where that is.
Yeah.
I mean, there's anything the select board needs to do, this is just notification. Particularly with the bridge, though, I was just, you know, thinking that there would be future communication with the town. You know, when, when they're going to actually start the work.
For West Street again? Yep.
Yeah, so.
Looking for comment, so I don't see it, you know, probably not next year, but I'm sure it's a couple of years out. Because they got to take all the comments that were made, the public comments, and absorb what was requested.
I know we had a copy of, oh, here it is. Got my stuff all in order.
Well, there is a link in the letter to monitor the status of the project.
And so what is the, where's the bridge? Over Gutter Brook?
Says near Waxwing.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a pedestrian bridge, is that the, what does that say? "Will close pedestrian gaps by providing ADA accessible sidewalks and ramps from the District 2 office to the northern limits."
Up to Wax.
Waxwing.
Yeah.
Which would mean that, like, there's that little bridge just south of Waxwing. So there would be sidewalks along that stretch.
That's what it seems like it's going to be.
Okay, and the Running Gutter Creek culvert will be replaced.
So the project will provide a shared use path, what is a shared use path?
Bicycle and pedestrian.
Bicycle lane.
And pedestrians, I would.
Bicycle and pedestrian.
Or it's going to be bicycle.
Separated from the street.
Yeah.
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 And that would be from Big Y to Lynnseed. Which will, may require curb line adjustments. The project may require culvert extensions at different locations. In addition, the intersection of Route 5 and Hatfield Street will be realigned. Wow.
A giant project.
Hmm, yeah. That's only been.
That was the big controversy. Putting around it up there.
I know, but it, that's not, it just says it will be realigned.
Well, then they found, what did they find, that art, Indian artifacts or something up here like they did on the on-street?
Yeah, so, hmm. And the Running Gutter Creek culvert will be replaced and widened. Where's that? What's Running Gutter?
Thinking it might be the one by the Ruthier property.
Okay, so it's the same one, the same crossing that they're talking about, okay. Okay, so, so basically sidewalks from Big Y to the Waxwing.
Yes, that's what it seems like.
Twenty.
So I, is, my only question is, remember when public transportation wanted to put some bus stops in there? I wonder if that's part of that project.
Yeah, there are some bus stops there, but they're just kind of on the side of the road.
Right.
Yeah.
They, they say in here, enhanced crosswalks will be added to provide access to transit stops. Is there anything else?
Where did I see that? Where did you?
It's got to be. That, that's a.
Yeah. Crossing. It's a $20 million project. We're not paying for. Yeah. Okay, I mean, that's, I think it's just good for people to know that that's happening, but I mean, we should make sure we stay in touch with Mass DOT.
Yeah, we'll just have to see, you know, I'm sure when they start getting closer, there'll be more notifications.
They, they do a decent job of arranging for community meetings and other things on these, so I'm sure they'll reach out to DPW and make sure we can get that out there to the public. It's a big change.
Yeah. I do see people walking on that stretch of road, so.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of them are DOT people that work in that building.
Those people tend to walk, they, they have their own sidewalks, so they wa, I, I'm aware of this, they, they have like a little walking path. But I mean, really on the road, like up by Smithsonian, even by American Inn and beyond RK, I see, I just see pedestrians, just, you know.
Plus, there's a lot of people on the other side of the line, you know, they walk to Whole Foods, they walk to the Big Y.
Right.
And they already did that intersection there by Damon Road, and they included new sidewalks down there, so that's going to be just the link to get there.
Right, so the sidewalks go to Big Y from King Street, and now they'll just keep going. Okay, well, I mean, it's, it's good information, really, we have no responsibility relative to the project, including the cost, so. Okay, so the next item is to sign the agreement between the town of Hatfield and the Teamsters. Lots of signings.
Yeah, the tentative agreement had been signed quite some time ago, and then they added those changes to the agreement. We received this agreement a while ago, and then I realized the board never signed it.
We should do that. Okay, I'll, I'll take a motion on this.
Do we need a motion to sign it?
Yes, I would.
Okay, but we've already approved the contract.
The tentative agreement, the negotiating items, but this is the entire agreement.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept and sign the agreement between the town of Hatfield and the Teamsters Union Local 404, Unit A Labor's 47124 till 63027.
Thank you.
At midnight.
Okay, midnight.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I just want to take a minute to thank Greg, because Greg was the board representative on those contract negotiations, and I appreciate that. Thanks, Greg.
Well.
Okay, last DPW item is a vacation carryover request and clarification from Garrett Berry. There was some requests to carry over on vacation, we sort of took them on individual bases. And Garrett is looking to carry over a week, but he has a specific week in mind that he would take off. And, and, you know, we, we sort of looked at Garrett's situation as unique because of the extreme, these extreme, very extreme medical circumstances last year.
So I'll just say, the board had approved carryover through December 31st this year. Garrett will be using most of his time then, those two weeks, this last week he's asked to take in February because that's when he plans to take time off.
Yeah.
Go to Florida, and that's, you know, it seems like he tried his best to fit in with the board.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with the carryover because of the extreme circumstances, and because he's giving very specific timeframe of when he's going to use it. Because we want to put an end to this carryover stuff, so I think this would put an end to that.
Okay, I mean, I agree with you, but again, let's remind department heads to start thinking in January about using their vacation, because we, we want to get away from carryover. I mean, there are extreme situations, I agree that this is one of them, so.
Well, and we found ourselves in this situation because of COVID, and we allowed a lot of carryover, and it just kind of kept carrying over, and we've been pretty clear the last couple of years, no more.
We want people to take vacations, we want them to.
And there is a provision to carry some over, so some can be carried over, but we are not entertaining any further requests to carry, unless there's a, again, additional very extenuating circumstances, like the situation Garrett had, which was very extenuating.
So I'll make a motion to allow this carryover because of the unique situation for Garrett to carry over, but he will be using it by February. And if he doesn't use it by February, then there, that'll be an issue.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's nothing to sign, that's just, yep.
Can I make an add, that if anybody's unsure of their time, they can reach out to our office?
Yeah. That's an excellent point. Thanks, Tammy. Okay, so we're moving right into our town administrator report. The first item is the senior center flooring removal and replacement.
And that's now the only item, because the second one has been taken care of out of order, which is great. So the last time we met, we mentioned that the very next day, we would be doing the bid opening for the downstairs basement COA flooring renovation project. We had $100,000 that was earmarked for the project, and we were happy to announce that the low bid came in from Capital Carpet and Flooring of Wilmington, Mass at $58,877, it's $58,877. Their alternate number one was $6,275, and we have gone in the direction of wanting to award them both the contract and the alternate, that's our recommendation to this board, to move ahead with that. We have a draft contract for your review tonight that has been reviewed by town council, and we'll be going to the, to the company to, to look at and review, but we anticipate that that should be in good shape to move forward. We've checked in with them, and they will be able to deliver on the schedule, which we had asked for, and there's no indication that there'd be any change from the price that they bid at. So we did receive six bids in the bid opening. All but one were within the budget that we looked at, and this was the clear low bid. We checked their references, they do a lot of work around. We checked their references. They do a lot of work around the state, and the references that we talked to were very enthusiastic about their good work. So we don't have any reservations at this time, and recommend to the board moving forward this contract.
Excellent.
I'll make a motion to award the contract to Capital Carpet and Flooring Specialists as presented by Andrew.
Sure, and I'm happy to sign this. On this notice of award, flooring is misspelled. Oh, is that okay?
Oh, it is. Oh.
We'll just, we can.
I will, well, we, could you print it tonight, or do I need to come back?
You can do that.
Okay. So let's let's get that fixed, and and then I will, that one is just for me to sign, and then the contract is for all of us to sign. Did we actually vote, or did you just?
I just made the motion.
Okay. Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's to both award the bid and approve the contract.
Yes.
Great.
Will there be any more need for like moving stuff they were talking about, like moving their furniture around and such?
So the, that ad alternate was for the moving.
Okay.
So because they came in so far under budget, we decided that we'll recommend to you that that you also move forward that ad alternate. And then we also have, we'll talk about this later, but we have some funding set aside also for a storage unit, for a pod that we can put.
Oh, okay.
That we can put items into, so we'd be responsible for that pod. They're responsible for the boxing and moving. Actually, we'll do most of the boxing dealt with the moving.
And the pod is that, oh, that's included in here. Okay.
The pod isn't included in the contract, but.
No, but it's included in your ARPA.
In the.
It's in the ARPA funding memo.
That's right.
Okay, great. And the pod, will that be parked out here on premises? Great, so if we could just get this printed, and I'll sign this tonight while we're here.
Taking care of.
Under Town Administrator Report, last meeting, we had a vote to award the contract for the culvert pending paperwork. Did they submit the paperwork?
They did.
That we wanted.
So I I received the certificate of certificate of insurance for workers' comp.
Okay.
And I had already received the payment bond. This is the workers' comp certificate that was outstanding. I did receive that, and I issued the notice to proceed.
So Phil, any update on the culvert? Now, we've awarded it, so. Did they get back to it all?
They were supposed to start, I guess, did they ever send in the workman's comp certificate?
Yeah.
Okay, so the pipe is there.
Notice to proceed was issued.
Okay, so now that they have the notice to proceed, I'm sure that they will start because the pipe is there. The pipe was delivered.
Oh, with this, with this cold weather, can they actually grow out?
Yeah, they can still do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Keep us posted. Thank you. Do we want to just skip to topic eight and talk about ARPA funds while we're talking about ARPA funds?
It's on our minds.
It's on our minds. So we're getting close to the deadline here on having all of our ARPA funds committed and under contract, right? So the remaining amount in the flooring is now $34,348. Correct?
That's correct, and that allows for $500 for a storage pod. You could also be conservative and leave aside $1,000 in case we think it's two months of storage, but our current plan is for only one. So $500 should be fine, and if we go over, I think we'd be able to cover that cost from somewhere. So the revised, the remaining amount now is $34,348 just from that $100,000 for the budget alone.
Okay.
On the next page of the memo that we sent in, there was previously $27,000 of previously unobligated funds. So the total amount now that is unobligated is $61,631.55.
Does that include the fire station?
It should include everything, yes.
What I'm saying, because that project is ongoing.
And we still have funds that are left for the fire station.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That is not.
We're not calling that unobligated.
We're not. Yeah, we're not. Yeah, that's obligated.
And that was shown in the documents that we had last week, at the last meeting, that showed the projects that were still under contract, and that's one of them. We just need to have funds under contract at this time.
Okay, so we, that's that's a lot more than we thought we'd have left, and I don't know how you feel, David, but I think we should do both of the school because they switched their projects.
Yeah.
With $61,000.
They switched it three times, right? From the original to a second to now a third.
Yeah, yeah, they have.
Because there was the, it was gonna be the, originally it was gonna be the thing on the roof for the freezer, right?
Yeah.
Went to something for the heating system or something?
Yeah, they took money from the freezer project and put it into
the heating system.
Right, and now it's the steam table.
Steam table.
Yeah, no, they moved money from the heating system to the freezer. Actually, they had increased the amount for the freezer unit on the roof.
That project?
That was, the board did authorize moving money from the HVAC work at Smith Academy.
They didn't do some of the HVAC work.
I don't know anything about that project.
Wasn't there like 70 something thousand for the, for the HVAC work up at Smith Academy that was authorized, I believe?
Money was authorized. I don't know if they've done any work yet.
Or even contracted for it.
Yes, I don't know that.
But that's with ARPA funds.
Correct.
We have to know that, because we'll lose that money if it's not contracted.
They should have that under contract by 12. Have to have that under.
Oh, they know that. They do know that, but I just don't know if they have the contract in place yet. Yeah, no, Connor and I talked about this just recently.
So we don't know what percentage, how much of that 70 something thousand dollars that was for the art, for the HVAC work they used to do the freezer piece?
But they moved 50,000.
So there was 40,000 in total that was appropriated or allocated for the freezer.
Right.
And then they've decided they need to get the steamer for the kitchen.
Okay.
And they would like to forego the freezer unit. So now what we're saying is.
What I'm saying is, let's do the freezer unit.
Is the freezer unit just not working and they're not using it?
Well, they said the condenser unit is still working at elementary school, but it's on its last leg.
Right, but it's not a priority project. Connor was very clear to say it's not a priority.
It's a priority, but it wasn't urgent.
It wasn't urgent, but it's not urgent.
Right, but it was on the capital plan, and we originally included it in our ARPA expenditures to close ARPA out, and then when the steamer, what is that called, steamer bin or whatever that is, steamer table, went, they said, fine, we'll change and do the steamer table. So why would we not take, if we've got 61,000, why would we not give them the money to fix that condenser unit?
Agreed.
40,000, if they can do it, if they can get that under contract in a couple of weeks?
They confirmed they can get it under contract. They can do that.
Yes.
And then, and then they're still, we're still leaving about 20,000, as we mentioned, to go to some turnout gear. Which is what we had said we would do if there was a little bit left over, because that can be purchased quickly, and it's an ongoing need.
So we also spoke to the town accountant, who said that if we have, say, $5,000 or some funny amount left over, they can find a way to allocate that towards something else that maybe we already have funding for, and then it would just reduce the amount that you need from free cash or something else. We're not at risk of the money evaporating. We can use it towards something, and then more money closes out towards free cash. There's a way to use that funding, but it's probably better to be using it on this capital that we've talked about at the start.
Yeah.
Plus, with the ARPA funds, my understanding.
Lose change at the end.
It doesn't disappear.
Could be rolled into something that we won't, and we won't lose that money.
That's right.
And then you'll have that money come back to us in free cash at some point.
We should be able to do.
But I mean, if we're talking about $21,000.
Yeah, no, yeah.
I would use the $21,000 towards, or something, if you have.
Yeah, I mean, and the decision that we made with the capital planning was that it would go.
But with the, with the ARPA funding, my understanding is long as we target or designate something by the end of this month.
Right.
We could spend it next month on something, but I mean, we have to designate it. So we say we designated to the school or to the fire department or whatever, we've designated that money to be spent for those expenditures. That's the way I see it.
So not just designated, but under contract.
Under contract. So actually an agreement with a vendor. Yeah. And you're saying the freezer, they could have that, because I mean, they were, they were poised to do that anyway.
Yeah.
When this, when this.
And also, will they have finished their HVAC work that they?
It doesn't, the work doesn't have to be finished by December 31st.
Do they have that under contract as well?
Phil, do you know if they have that under contract?
I'm a little confused. So the original funding for the HVAC was what?
Upgrades.
I think it was 70 something.
75.
On the top of my head, I'm thinking it was.
It was 75, and then.
But then didn't they take some money from that and move it?
Yes.
Yes.
It was moved to the refrigerated unit on the roof at the elementary school.
So that was the freezer?
Correct.
So that left. But that did, but they didn't do that work. Correct.
They haven't done that.
So now, when the steamer table came up, where did that money come from?
It was the full amount that had been designated for the.
And that is, but that is the full amount that that steamer, that the steamer.
It's 39,000. It's 39,000.
39,000, yes.
Yeah, isn't that what they said, 39,000?
And I went online with the model number that he gave me, and it was actually higher online. Because I, I looked up at steamer tables, I saw a bunch at 10, 15, 18,000.
Money is depleted.
No, well, it went to the steamer, but the project still needs to be.
The money for the HVAC system at the school was decreased.
Because they said they could, they were comfortable decreasing it.
Then what did they ask for that much money for to start?
So they still have 30,000 designated, is what you're saying?
It would be.
I think what you have to get clarification from Connor is what's, what of that original number that we gave them for the HVAC, what's left after they've done the steamer table? Okay.
But, wait a minute.
The steamer table has nothing to do with the HVAC.
What does that have to do with the HVAC?
Because that's.
No.
Freezer.
No, he, they took it to put it to the freezer project.
Which they haven't done yet, though.
But the, which, then, then they took all the freezer money to do the steamer table. It's like follow the bouncing ball.
Right, originally, yes, it did. There was.
70 something, 70 something thousand, 73,000 minus the 40,000, so essentially at 33,000 left.
Only, only 15 came.
Only 15. Right, it wasn't a total of 40.
So if it was 73, they took 15 out, so now it's 58, which we believe is under contract, but we will double check.
Okay, so that's, that's the first thing we need to find out.
Yeah, make sure it's under contract.
Whether that's settled.
Yeah.
And if that's the case, and the is, and what's, so we have, so they still think it's 40,000 to fix the freezer?
Yes, 39,000.
39,000 to fix the freezer?
Yep.
So then approve that from the 61 that you say you have left over, correct?
Yep.
That leaves us around 22, 21 and change. And then Garrett should, or Bob should get under contract, or obviously it's gonna take time to get that stuff delivered, but get under contract the turnout gear and things that he needs, you know, even if he needed a couple of new bottles for the, you know.
We said turnout gear.
Yeah.
Turnout gear.
And I'd like to stick to turnout gear. That's what the capital planning committee said.
And get that under contract, and then see what's left over.
Well, what's, what'll be left over is what Bob will purchase of turnout gear. Like, if we tell him, spend 21,000.
Spend every nickel of it, probably.
Right.
It seemed like his ceiling was around 17,500 for, for turnout gear, and if he had less, he can probably make that work too.
And if he had more, he can just order. Yeah. Oh, his ceiling was 17,5?
Yeah.
That's the impression I got, that the ceiling was around there. I don't know what he'd do with, with more.
Sounds like there's four or five more left over, still hanging out there.
Yep.
He, he said he would be comfortable with 17, but I'm sure he can spend 21. Doable.
Well.
Yeah, he probably could.
But if there's four or five more left, we, that's sort of a reserve, and then you can just say, you said the accountant can figure out a place to put that money and then, and so it doesn't go.
That is what the accountant said, that they can put it towards something.
Okay.
Well, it also gives us a little cushion in case the freezer unit, or, or you need the pod for longer or something like that.
As long as it's under contract for something.
Yeah, okay.
I think we can make that work. The other use we put out there, please vote it down if you need to, was the Stormwater Asset Management Plan, which we did not have free cash set aside for that last year. There may be invoices coming in for that project soon. We believe we can cover it using the state grant that's there, but we would need to come up with a, a free cash ask for that at next town meeting. So if we want to get a jump on that with the remaining ARPA funds, we could do it. It's just not on the capital plan. That's a decision for the board.
Yeah, I mean, we were pretty clear that everything was gonna be on the capital plan. Yep.
Sounds to me like Andrew and Marlene are on top of this and are paying attention to this and are going to get this taken care of by December 31st.
Yes. And the school superintendent is certain that he would have the HVAC upgrade under contract.
Okay.
I just, and we can confirm that with him. We'll contact him tomorrow. I just don't know who, who the contractor is.
Yeah, I don't care who the contractor is, as long as it's all built on.
And I don't know if he has the contract signed.
Sounds like, it sounds like the money will be spent on what we agreed on way back when, when it first started.
Yeah, if we, if we now take a vote in light of the fact that we now have about 61,000 left, we could vote now to also go back and do the freezer unit, because we had changed, we had done a vote to change it to the steamer table.
You know, you know that's gonna come up again this year on the capital plan?
It's gonna come up on the capital plan. It's, it needs to be done. So we, so all we would need to do tonight is vote the freezer unit, the H E S freezer unit, because we've already voted the turnout gear.
Was the turnout gear voted on?
I think it was all, that was like sort of part of, it was sort of done as.
The request was presented at the last select board meeting, but I, my, my memory serves me correctly, the select board had said, let's hold off and take it all up.
I guess I'm thinking maybe the, the capital planning committees, that was our vote, was that anything left over would just be turnout gear, because it's an ongoing need and it's a quick purchase. So maybe we need to vote the freezer unit and the turnout gear.
Yes, please.
Okay, I will make a motion that we allocate 39,000 for the H E S freezer.
Yes.
And 17,5.
That's your decision. It's either the balance of the funds to turnout gear, or 17,5 to turnout gear, and the balance to a use that the town accountant deems allowable.
I would say that, because that gives us a little cushion for some of the other projects.
Yep.
So 17,5
Yep.
for turnout gear, making sure we let the chief know his tight timeline on getting that ordered.
Second that.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Wow, we will not have to talk about ARPA funds.
Seems like.
Kind of money was not as fun as it seemed like it would be.
Been doing that for years, yeah.
Yeah, years. But you know something? We got a lot of really sound capital
Yes.
projects taken care of with that. Yeah. Okay, thanks for your diligent monitoring of that. Okay, I have lost my agenda. Where did I, oh, here it is. Okay, so now back to topic seven, review of town bylaws, identify an advisory committee.
So the last discussion, believe it or not, was in March this year, and it was discussed at a select board meeting, March 14th, and the select board had opted to take, have some more time to review this. So I had requested to the board, or recommended appointing a five-member advisory committee consisting of a select board representative, the town clerk, the moderator, building zoning enforcement officer, and the town administrator, and an at-large member. I did have a conversation with, with the moderator, and he is not he does not feel comfortable that as the moderator, he should be on that committee. So I was thinking that possibly, instead of the moderator, maybe Joe LaValle, who has experience, prior experience, of course, over. experience, prior experience, of course, overseeing town meeting and overseeing rules and policies.
But the, that's the rules of town meeting.
Well, that, you're right.
Rules of town meeting and bylaws are very different.
But Joe is willing to, to accept the appointment if the board should decide to. And this is just to do a review of the bylaws, just, right.
Joe would make a good choice.
And I expect it will take at least a full year, if not longer, to review that.
I'm fine with that.
So I just, I wanted to move it forward. We got very busy back in the spring and that's been on my radar.
Yeah, do you want to actually take a vote to form the committee? And so which of the three of us wants to take care of that?
I'll do it.
Okay. Sounds good.
Perfect.
Look at him go. Okay, so I will make a motion that we appoint that committee to start reviewing the town bylaws.
So excluding the moderator, right? Excluding the moderator.
Well, as per discussion, it would not be the moderator, it would be Joe LaValle.
Okay.
And which would basically be an at-large member.
You're right.
I mean, he's really just, he's not.
That's true.
So there'd be two at-large members.
Yes.
I mean, I think it's an important distinction because if, if he were to resign, then it would, we would fill it with just another at-large member.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I actually think that'll be interesting work, Greg.
I do too. That would leave another at-large member that we need to.
We would be looking for an at-large member.
Yes.
Yeah, so certainly anyone listening who's interested in taking that deep dive into the town bylaws, that'd be, this is your big chance.
Thank you for doing that.
Veterans service agreement with the city of Northampton.
Yes, so as you all know, we entered an agreement last year, the city of Northampton, for providing our veterans services. This is traditionally a position within the town. We had a stipended position, take care of this. Upon not having a person filling that position anymore, we were in a bind and needed to have veteran services provided for. So we did enter in this agreement. The agreement allows for us to remain a part of this, this group of shared services with the city of Northampton as the lead agent, as long as we re-up by January first of each calendar year. So this is our planned last select board meeting before that time. We want to have a decision from the board about whether to continue with these services.
And, but this goes through June thirtieth of 2025?
We, we attach for you, yes, yes, that, that's the current agreement that we're on.
We don't have a new agreement. They, city of Northampton just would like to receive notification no later than January first, if the town intends to renew.
Be on June thir, so we're talking about.
On June thirtieth of next year, so.
So we're talking about.
FY twenty six.
So we're, there's nothing for us to actually sign in here? Okay, that's.
I'll make a motion to accept the veteran service agreement with the city of Northampton for fiscal year twenty six.
Second, motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve the proclamation forming Hampshire Regional Emergency Planning Committee and appoint an emergency response coordinator.
Yes, so this comes to us from the fire chief. This is something that's been going on for a while, that the Hampshire Regional Emergency Planning Committee. This proclamation that we have allows basically these entities of different towns to come together and negotiate on what a actual intermunicipal agreement would look like. So this is not the IMA itself, this is a general understanding of the communities that they're going to, to form an IMA. The advantage to having a more formal infrastructure for this organization is that it can accept grants, it can pay out monies, instead of all of these things being done by the individual municipality every time they get, say, two thousand dollars from the state. So it's a, it's a good arrangement. The chief, we would recommend as being that the person to, to be the emergency management coordinator for this. He's already obviously our emergency management director. So the two votes that would be needed would be, one, to approve of this proclamation that, that we have for you tonight. And then the other would be to appoint Bob Flaherty as the emergency response coordinator for the Hampshire Regional Emergency Planning Committee, the representative from Hatfield.
So we'll be moving away, I guess we'll be moving away from emergency management director to this.
Yeah, so we'd still have the local director, and this is really just for regional efforts. And, you know, the state is interested in doing a lot of regional work, but obviously you'd still need the local planning and the local management. But this, this can help for, for the planning and for, for some of the responses in a regional situation.
All right.
This has been, they've had this for a while.
Oh, yes.
I'll make a motion that we sign the joint proclamation for the Hampshire Regional Emergency Planning Committee.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That document is just for me to sign. And then I will make a motion that we appoint Chief Bob Flaherty as our emergency response coordinator, Hatfield's emergency response coordinator to the Hampshire Regional Emergency Planning Committee.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks to chief for doing that. Do we still have a Hatfield Emergency Planning Committee?
I don't believe so. It's not active. The committee is not active.
I mean, it used to be this huge committee.
Yeah, we used to do a lot of that stuff.
I know, there was a lot of meetings and we did tabletops and all kinds of stuff. I mean.
The problem is, a lot of it's changed. I mean, Hatfield found out that we no longer can house people because of the new regulations that came in, so it's like Smith School is, if we ever have to, we have an emergency and a place, a shelter to go to for the people in town, they'll have to go to Northampton because in order to have people and a shelter for emergency situations, there's a lot of requirements that are required and we don't have the resources.
But the, the scope of the EPC was far beyond that. I mean, it, it really looked at a variety of different situations that could happen in town, making sure that all the resources were known, like even how to notify, you know, certain people in the certain emergency situations. It was really comprehensive. They really went into the weeds on a variety of, you know, whether it was weather related or fire, mass evacuations or, I mean, it was actually kind of fascinating and it was really active. That was a Bob Donaldson thing.
Bob Donaldson?
Yeah, Bob Donaldson.
I mean, now you have Western, Western Mass has emergency response from other groups that'll come in right away and set things up for you and, and it's, it's more regional, regional emergency response.
Yeah, they did, they did actual exercises, tabletops, and, and those things existed even back then, but it was, you know, it was.
We had to have a plan to activate.
There was, yeah, exactly, there was a whole plan and, you know.
It's still available.
I'm sure it's still sitting on a shelf somewhere, but I mean, I'm, I don't know. Things happen, we should be ready. They do happen. I, in fact, that, that actually brings me, I just noticed there's this evacuation route signs that went up around town.
Yes. The highway put those up, right, for the fire department?
I mean, evacuation.
Yeah, I don't know what that means.
For what, to where, like they just appeared.
If there was ever a need to evacuate, that would be the route.
One of the things that the comprehensive planning committee did was we looked at the evacuation routes based on where the flooding might be if it was down here and the bridges that you would be able to get over, based on how much flooding it is, all that kind of stuff. So those are, those could be related to that, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it just, they're so vague, it just says evacuation route. I, I was kind of surprised by that because if you think about like, one of our late, our last emergencies was the gas line situation out on five and ten. So if you heard there was an emergency in town and you evacuated that way, you'd be going right in towards where it was. So I was kind of surprised that they were up there. They, it doesn't say like evacuation route in case of river flooding, it just says, I mean, it just seems so general and arbitrary. We don't know what the emergency would be or where it will be, so how can we identify an evacuation route? That was my question about it.
So, so the fire department had the one, had those put up? Well, we can ask them why. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need an explanation.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so the last item, actually, so we have an appointment of just another per diem firefighter. We just signed that.
Not a per diem, oh firefighter, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You also have a.
Yeah, but we just signed.
A request from the police chief.
Yeah, I'll get to that. We just signed the.
Yes, you do.
Okay, so you can, we can get on to Dukoschak's request here?
Yes. So he is requesting the select board, he has a letter that he has submitted to the select board to promote Officer Michael Johnson.
To the rank of sergeant.
Would you like me to read the letter?
If you want to. Or, yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, unless you'd like to do that.
I mean, I can. So this is a letter from Chief Dukoschak to the select board. It is my intent to promote Officer Michael Johnson to the rank of sergeant beginning twelve seven, twenty twenty four. Officer Johnson has been with the town for approximately three years. In those years, he has demonstrated the knowledge needed to perform well in this role. During his tenure at the Hatfield Police Department, Officer Johnson has completed training in crisis intervention team training, crisis negotiation training, school resource officer training, and been granted his drone pilot's license. Officer Johnson is part of our co-responder program and works very well with our clinician. Officer Johnson works with our veteran outreach program and displays a constant professional attitude towards his duties. Most importantly, Officer Johnson is well-liked within the community and I believe has earned their respect along with mine. So I hope that you will join me in seeing that Officer Johnson is a valued member of this department and deserving of this promotion.
So we, we need a motion on this?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint Officer Johnson as sergeant, as presented by our police chief, and I think it's an excellent, excellent choice on his part.
And I will say, the chief called me today about this and said that this, that there is a slight rate increase and that that is available in his budget. So there's no, no extra monies being requested at this.
All right, I'll second the motion.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? I mean, I have the opportunity to interact with now Sergeant Johnson, MJ, frequently, and he's always very pleasant and professional. Hmm?
We gotta vote it?
Oh, yes, all those in favor?
Aye. Congratulations.
Yeah, that's great.
Sergeant MJ.
Yes, he does deserve it.
He does.
Yeah. So that's it, I just, we'll wait for these to be reprinted?
We'll do that right.
I'm gonna go do it right now.
Okay.
Have it in my hand.
Well, since this is our last meeting, I just want to lose sight of, as we go into the next year, I just, I just want to review some of the stuff real quick. I mean, the culverts being worked on, water treatment plant, we still got five and ten cleanup and stuff that has to happen there, right? Upstairs is still, most of it's done except for the media center stuff, which John is working on. And, and downstairs, the floor has to be done. And we actually have a report in December on finances and pre-cash in December, and that's fantastic, so.
Departments are working on their budgets.
So I don't know, moving forward for next year, if the board has anything that we, we will be pursuing for grants or anything that you might know of at this point.
Yeah, IT, Community Compact Grant Round Opening, if we haven't, did we get any funds from them last year?
No.
So that'll be eligible if that's something that interests us, so we'll see what else. There'll be plenty of things opening up soon.
And the other notable item is that this is Marlene's last meeting.
It is, unless there's a need to have another meeting.
Yeah, right, just, I'm pretty much just guaranteed we'll have to have another meeting, but Marlene, that's a lot of years sitting at this table. And I can't imagine what it feels like to sit here at your last meeting.
Doesn't really feel any different, it just, yeah.
It will, the first Tuesday, the first Tuesday in January, when you're home in your slippers and you're not sitting here for hours on end, that'll feel different.
Like I said, it's just, I look at it, it's just another meeting. I thought annual town meeting was my last town meeting and then we ended up having a special coming, so that's why I say you don't say never.
Well.
You might be getting a call from Andrew or me.
Well, we're, you know, we're delighted to have Andrew here. Andrew's obviously stepping in nicely, but it's been a pleasure, Marlene. We're gonna miss having you here.
Same here.
Yeah.
It's been an honor.
It's been an honor. And good luck to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts.
Oh, thank you very much.
With that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I will second that.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
Thank you, Marlene, for all you've done for the town of Hatfield, and I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas before I go.
Oh, that's right, happy, you have to say happy holidays to everyone.
I did.
Oh, you did.
At the beginning, okay, yeah. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's a big deal.